And.
Hey, how are you, sir?
Hey, Dan, how are you?
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
This is Alan.
How you doing, Alan?
I'm good. I have a little computer problem, so I'm on the phone right now.
Well, you can participate by phone if you continue to have computer problems. That's never a problem.
Right. So if I can't join online here shortly, I'll just stay on the phone.
You bet. Please do.
Good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Where are you?
I'm home. I got my internet figured out.
Good.
Can you see me?
No.
Yes, we can. I can see, I can see you, Maria.
Okay, well, I'm sure that when my screen goes on, I'll be able to see everybody, but I'm gonna start the meeting precisely 7:00 PM, and that's only 30 seconds away. Kiko, are you still there?
I am.
Yeah, we're 15 seconds away from 7:00 PM.
Yep, I'm ready to go as soon as the countdown ends here.
That might have been the problem Alan was having too, because.
I'll tell you when the countdown's ending.
Okay. My clock may be a little fast.
Mr. Mayor, I'm good to go.
Okay. Is there background noise, Kiko?
There is if somebody, if you're not speaking, if you want to mute your. Mute, that would be great.
Okay, it's 7:01 PM. I'm going to start the Village of Los Rancho to Albuquerque Board of Trustees regular meeting, streamed via Zoom and Facebook. The date is September 9, 2020, and it is 7:01 PM. To remain in compliance with the state of New Mexico's amended public health order dated September 3, 2020, the Village of Los Rancho to Albuquerque is live streaming this meeting on its website, Facebook page, through Zoom video conferencing, and participates can join telephonically. The instructions on how to participate in this meeting have been posted on the Village website. I'm gonna move to item two, which is the roll call. Trustee Rael.
Here.
Thank you. Trustee Lewis.
Present.
Trustee Pacheco. Trustee Ricabini.
Here.
I'm gonna move to item three, approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm approving the agenda.
I said, I second.
I'm gonna call for the question. I'm gonna call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rael.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
We now move to the public comment period, item four. Participants may address the Board of Trustees to comment on issues, problems, or successes on topics that do not appear elsewhere on the agenda. Participants will also be given an opportunity to comment on agenda items for the open session as they come up. Submitted written comments that were sent to the clerk prior to the meeting will now be read. Danielle indicated that there were no written comments submitted by the deadline. Participants wishing to speak that registered with the clerk prior to the beginning of this meeting will be provided an opportunity to speak within the allotted three-minute time limit. The individual who indicated that he wanted to speak is Mr. Joe Craig. Kiko, can you get Mr. Joe Craig on the line?
Mr. Joe Craig is not in the meeting.
Okay, then if he's not available, we are going to move on. Let me verify that one more time. Kiko, is Joe Craig not available?
Mr. Joe Craig is not in the meeting, and may I ask everybody who's not currently speaking to mute, please?
Background noise. I need to ask if there's anyone else on this call or Zoom meeting that wishes to speak now at public comment period.
Stand by, Mr. Mayor. I have somebody possibly signing on. Give me one minute.
Sure.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, then I'm gonna move on. Item five is presentations. 5A is Dan Darnell Waste Management Industry Update. Mr. Darnell, are you on?
I am, sir.
Please present your industry update.
Okay, first of all, Danielle, do you have the? Do you have the PowerPoint up, or am I just gonna do the presentation?
Dan, hi, that's Danielle. It is not up, but all of the trustees have that available to them in front of them via notability or in a hard copy packet, so they have that, sir.
Oh, very good. So Mr.
I have it too.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with you, when I say to switch slides, you guys will know just to turn the page.
That's fine.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees and staff. It's certainly good to see all of you again, even though I'm still stuck here in my man cave. We're all kind of in that boat. COVID has not been nice to us in that regard. But for the record, I'm Dan Darnell, Public Sector Manager for Waste Management. I've been asked to provide a review of the terms of our agreement with the village and to give you an update concerning the status of recycling locally. And I know you have a healthy agenda, so I'll try to keep this as brief as possible. Switch slides. First, I want to thank you for the partnership that we've been able to forge over the past several decades, you know. Just we value that partnership, and we hope that you feel that we're delivering the highest level of service that you expect. I think we've shown that when any issue arises concerning our service, we address and resolve them expeditiously or as expeditiously as possible, and we're always here for you anytime that you need us. Tonight, I'm gonna begin by going over some of the terms of our agreement, just as a review, but also to share with you what we're seeing in the recycling market locally and discuss briefly the impact that the COVID-19 stay-at-home order has had on both trash and recycling. Slide. The agreement was for eight years, and after the first four, unless there was a reason otherwise, the agreement would renew for an additional four years. So this agreement began October 1, 2017. The automatic renewal date is October 1, 2021. This rule would continue the agreement through September 30 of 2025. The agreement grants an exclusive right to service all lines of business, residential, commercial, and industrial, including temporary roll-off, and I understand that the topic of the granting of an exclusive for temporary roll-off is kind of an issue of discussion, so let me just address that head-on. You know, every community has a right to negotiate the terms of any agreements that they're a part of, including the decision about lines of business like we're discussing. It's common to grant all lines of business to a single hauler if they have a good relationship with the hauler and that they know that they can trust them. Los Rancho's decision to include an exclusive for temporary roll-off work is not an anomaly. Exclusive contracts have been signed with various providers in various communities all across the state, including Corrales, Burnaleo, Rio Rancho, Belen, Peralta, Rio Communities, Farmington, Aztec, Bloomfield, Towne and House, just to name a few. So it's a very common practice for a variety of reasons, and the first one is the community only has to deal with one contractor. The community can negotiate a higher franchise fee and, more importantly, can be ensured that they're gonna receive that franchise fee if they're dealing with a single provider. Based on exclusivity, the community can negotiate rate that's set for the entire term of the contract, alleviating any surprise rate fluctuations or unexpected fees and those kinds of things. The village is part of their request for proposal process. They compared our pricing to other providers in the area, and it was communicated that they found that our rights were very competitive, and this was taken into consideration when allowing an exclusive for all lines of business. And I might just add, just a point of personal privilege, if our pricing's not competitive, why do we have the lion's share of the roll-off business across the metro area?
Dan, may I interject?
Yes, you may, please.
Our last franchise payment from you was received on the 18th of August, and it was for $4,501.56. So, and I understand that we get that approximately that amount every month. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would have no reason to doubt those figures, sir. Exclusive contracts allow only trucks from one company to drive on community streets and potentially impact infrastructure. So if any damage like that has occurred, the village knows exactly who to go talk to. Granting exclusivity to more lines of business gives that community more leverage to get better rates as well as free services to the village facilities. And lastly, I just want to point out that the village put out a formal request for proposal, which was a competitive process. It allowed all local solid waste and recycling providers the same equal opportunity to respond. All the area companies had an equal opportunity to bid on this work. I don't believe anyone else responded, but I may be incorrect in that. But in any case, a selection committee recommended the award be made to Waste Management, and the village board agreed. Go ahead and move to the next slide. In terms of the benefits to the village residents, we're contracted to provide solid waste collection every week and every other week recycling collection. We offer handicap and drive-back services. We offer low-income billing discounts, bulky item pickup service and manure collection, and we also offer two spring and two fall green waste collection weeks. Next, the benefits to the village businesses. We provide solid waste collection every week. We provide commercial recycling for any business that signs up for that service. It's strictly voluntary, and then we provide commercial roll-off and compactor services. Next slide. Here are the benefits to the village itself offered as a part of that agreement. We pay a 5% franchise fee as well as an annual fee equal to the shared gross receipts the village would receive during a taxable year. This is, this is the area that when you grant an exclusive, you're guaranteed to get that if you have a single hauler. We agreed to service all village properties. We provide 10 free roll-offs per year for the village to use and to provide year-round roll-off services to the AgroNature Center, all free of charge. Next slide. In addition, we only have three holidays per year, which would impact our schedule of service, New Year's, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. We provide monthly recycling reports as well as monthly recycling tips and information that the village can use and put on their website and newsletter. Next, the village negotiated a flat 2.5% or 2, yeah, 2.5% annual rate adjustment, which is adjusted on the anniversary date of the agreement, which would be October 1 of each year. The agreement is insured as the liability and performance. We have a million-dollar bond amount in place. The current residential rate is $17.41 per home for both trash and recycling. On October 1, this rate will go to $17.84. Next slide. If it's okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna pause here for just a second to see if anybody has any questions about the terms of the agreement before moving on to recycling, or I can.
My only question, Dan, is I have the agreement in front of me, and our attorney, Nan Winter, has asked to review it. So we may want to sit down with you within the next, say, week to 10 days, if you're available, to maybe chat about it?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I'm always available, Nan, anytime. I think you have my contact information, but.
Thank you. Move on.
Thank you. Next slide. Been sometime since we last talked about the cost of recycling. Maybe a good place to start is to give you a very brief overview of what happened in the recycling industry over the past couple of years. Next slide. Here's just a real quick overview. In 2017, over 30% of the world's recyclables were imported by China, but that market is long gone. The 30% loss of markets resulted in supply vastly outpacing demand. Commodity prices were depressed, and as a natural consequence of too much supply, manufacturers who use these recycling materials to make their new products, they've demanded cleaner material. So the processing costs have increased as well. So that's kind of the environment that we find ourselves operating in. And I will tell you, the overall health of the market has stabilized, and that's really good news, but it really hasn't improved. But recycling is a market, and just like all markets, it's cyclic. It's always looking for that equilibrium, the balance between supply and demand, and we believe that recycling will be profitable again, but it'll take some additional time to fill that 30% void. I provided two handouts for you to just peruse at your own leisure so that you can see what the commodity prices are doing. One of them is from February of this year, and the other is from June. They're truly all over the places. Buyers scramble to find the cleanest product sources. So next slide. As a very quick overview of where our recyclables go and how they're handled, we collect the materials at the curb, and then we take them to the Friedman Recycling Facility on Edith, and there the trash is separated from the recyclables, and the materials are individually sorted, baled, and shipped to factories that are gonna turn them into new products. Please. In January 2018, Friedman's processing fees was $15 a ton, but by July 2019, it had increased to $75.78 a ton. Now, although Friedman's rates have remained unchanged over the past nine months, and we're hoping into the near future for sure, there's no guarantee that there will not be some kind of future process and increases. What has changed, however, is the amount of contamination that we're seeing in the recycling stream. That's the amount of trash that's being placed into the recycling containers. At the first of the year, this downgrade was about 22%. Now it's gone to 28%. So in other words, 28% of every ton that we delivered to Friedman's is actually trash. Slide. I provided a very busy-looking spreadsheet comparing the first six months of 2019 to the first six months of 2020, and I'm gonna be referring to that information contained on that handout over the next three slides, and I kind of color-coded them for readability, so I hope that helped. But in 2019, during the first six months, we took in 170 tons of recycling at a 22% downgrade, and that meant that 37 tons of that material was trash. But in the first six months of 2020, we took in 238 tons at a downgrade of 28%, which meant that 67 tons was trash. Now, we believe this is partially due to the impact of the governor's stay-at-home order, and I'll illustrate that on the next slide. But as people stayed home, they generated more trash than they normally would have if they were working outside of the home, and it appears that many customers generated more trash than their trash cans could hold. And instead of getting a second trash cart, which is certainly available to them, many opted to just place the excess trash in the recycling container. We're also seeing that in other communities around, so it's not just Los Rancho's. It was definitely an impact. In terms, next slide, I'm sorry. In terms of the amount both trash and recycling has increased from 2019 to 2020, I put together some numbers to show that impact. In 2019, each home averaged 181 pounds of trash and 30 pounds of recyclables in their cart. Now, those rose through the first six months of 2020 to 297 pounds of trash. That was up 116 pounds and 42 pounds in the recycling cart, which is up 12 pounds. That's an increase of 643 tons of trash and 68 tons of recycling year over year. And to add to that, now we're taking another 6% more trash in the recycling stream. Slide. So why are these numbers important? Let me explain that. Approximately 30% of the rate to provide solid waste and recycling services to a home goes to pay for the disposal of those items that we collect, either in a landfill as trash or Friedman's for recycling. And we calculate what that portion of the rate will be based on historical numbers, so residents are not overcharged. In this case, the trash portion of the rate was based on an average of 181 pounds per cart, but we're now collecting 297 pounds per cart. And since extra 116 pounds per cart are not covered by the rates, we've been subsidizing the rates to pay the extra disposal. On the recycling side, it's very similar. The disposal portion of the rate was paid for 30 pounds of recycling with a 22% downgrade, but now we're seeing 12 more pounds per home of recycled material at a downgrade of 6% more or 28%. Now, that downgrade equates to an additional 14 tons of trash, which we have to pay to have hauled from the Friedman facility at a cost of approximately three times what it would cost if we picked it up as trash at the curb. So you can see COVID has had a definite impact on the trash and recycling, for sure. And that situation sounds kind of bad, right? And I get that. But the good news is that I'm not here to ask anybody for anything, so we're not asking for disposal rate increases or anything. I mean, we're kind of all into this COVID thing together, but I think it's important that we make you aware of the impact that we're seeing. I'm just making you aware of what the numbers look like, what the situation looks like. We certainly are in hopes, and we believe that these numbers are gonna come back down as our community continues to open back up. But we should have that information for you in the fourth quarter of the year, kind of give you a little picture, a little better picture about that time. So if you could invite me to come back in to discuss, I would certainly appreciate that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
So that concludes my presentation this evening, Mr. Mayor. I told you I tried to keep it as short as I could, but I thank you for giving me some time, and I hope you found it informative. And I'll stand for any questions that you or the board might have.
So, Dan, let me ask the board. Does anybody on the board have a question at this time for Mr. Darnell?
I do, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Dan, thank you for the, for the presentation. It's always very informative. I think I've learned more about trash in the last two sessions with you than I've ever known about. So it sounds obviously like, you know, the trash that you're picking up is increasing, and I think we all understand that it is probably due to the COVID-19 situation, but wouldn't this be a good time to educate the residents as well? I mean, this is, like I said, I've learned more over your last two presentations than I ever knew before, and maybe we can change some of the habits of the residents through education. And I know that you send things through the mail, but is there something more that maybe your company can offer to to get our residents to do a better job?
Sure. What I can do is we can get with our communications team. We actually have a communications team that they specialize in various areas. Some of them are like social media gurus and others are more, you know, do articles and those kinds of things. Let me get with them and see if we can't really target something for Los Rancho's and the residents. I, you know, I don't want to be real pushy on this because we're all in this together, and we understand the fact that COVID-19 has had on every family. But, and so we're not complaining about anything that I just explained to you. It's just a matter of fact. And so we don't want to, we don't want people to think that we're, that we're complaining about it, because we're not. But it is, it is a situation that we have to deal with. As far as the contamination, I definitely think that we can have an impact. So let me do that, and I'll get with Ann, if that's okay.
Dan, this is the mayor. Dan, we have an extra one page. I know for sure we have an extra one page in our Village Vision magazine. And if you could get us one page of education, we can get it in the magazine by the 14th of September. So we only have five days. Can I ask your marketing person to call Jennifer Schilling tomorrow at our village phone number and work on something that we can get in this magazine, because it'll be out in a couple of weeks?
I'll work on that. I'll send out those emails tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Please, and I think that'll help educate, because this magazine goes to every resident in the Village of Los Rancho, so let's get started there, okay?
Yes, sir.
Any further questions from the governing body? Okay, if none, we're gonna. Thank you, Dan, very, very much. It was a very informative and a perfect timing for you to make this presentation.
Thanks, sir.
We're now gonna move to the consent agenda. There will be no separate discussions of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. 6A is the minutes of the August 12, 2020 regular meeting. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Please.
I'll second, but.
Go ahead.
Okay.
I need the second, and then we'll open it for discussion.
Page your second.
Okay, any discussion?
I have corrections.
Yes, go ahead, Pablo.
Okay, if you go to page 48, line 982, there's two incorrect words in there. It says misjudged that if they were to move the pounding, that word acquire, it says it should be would require instead.
Right. Require.
Yes, and then on page, rather, on line 984, it says which is using why. It should be which is usually why.
Usually.
And that's, that's all I have.
Anybody else have comments on the minutes? I'm gonna call for the question. I'm gonna call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rael.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna move to item seven, departmental reports. And let me read something. The departmental reports are included in the packet and reflect activities for the period listed in the individual reports. So at this time, I'm gonna ask the governing body if you have any questions for staff regarding the reports. If so, we will have each trustee ask all their questions before we move to the next trustee. Trustee Rael.
Yes, I have some.
Go ahead.
My question is for Maria Rinaldi.
A.
On page 71 of 135, regarding the item number 23, the ADA improvements. Were these not part of the original contract? Is that something we added later, or what, why is it that we're paying for this now?
Mayor, Trustee Rael, are you referring to change order number 23 and the amount of 22,000?
Yes.
Yes, we did not meet our original design requirement for ADA on-street parking, so we had to scramble and try to make some ADA access, and it was go, and we put in several ADA parking spaces on street, and that is the cost of the concrete work and labor and materials for those additional ramps.
Okay, thank you.
They were not in the original design. I'm sorry, that was your question.
Thank you. I have one other. I have one other.
Yes.
Contract amount, you're showing that 7 billion, it should be 7 million.
Right.
Oh, Mayor, trustee Rael, you know, and I knew this from my last report. I'm so sorry, that is correct. It is 7 million. I will correct that. I added the zero at the end there.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, trustee Lewis, do you have any questions for the staff?
I do.
Go ahead.
First is my first question is for Administrator Simon. In your report under drainage. Staff also will be looking at and monitoring pounding at Enchanted Circle. Is that Enchanted Valley Circle?
Mayor, trustee Lewis, yes, I believe so. Is the street that was mentioned in the last board of trustees meeting? And I believe it's the street B to the east of Fourth Street.
But it is Enchanted Valley, right?
I believe so, yes.
Go ahead, trustee Lewis.
Okay. I had a comment on administrative justices' report. Again, this month, there were more new residential builds than usual. She has in her report, the second bullet point. And, and I would just ask her in the future to elaborate on those a little bit. It's a good statement, but it, I don't know what to compare it to or what it means. And, and so I would, I'd just like to know what's usual and what's happening and, and you know, so if she would elaborate on that point, I would appreciate it.
Tiffany, Jess, did you hear that?
Yes, I did.
Good. Go ahead, trustee Lewis.
And then on down. You, you talked about drafting the policy for short-term rentals. Where are we at on that? I mean, we're, we're about a year into this thing. And, and you know, you, you put in there, we hope to bring this to the board in the next few months. Ideally by the end of the year. I, I'm trying to get my hands around why it's a year later. Or almost, they're going to be a year later.
Right, so trustee Lewis, trustees, mayors. So in this case, short-term rentals is a pretty large, I guess, topic to tackle. Communities in the area have also taken a bit of time drafting their policies. And in doing research on other communities, some have kind of let it lie for several years, just preferring to wait and see. Which we're, we're trying to research, I guess, the different options to be able to present it to the board for the village specifically. There, each community kind of picks and chooses if they do want to regulate the different ways that they do want to regulate. And so we're trying to see all of the different options that other communities do and what would fit in the village.
All right, thank you, Tiffany. I appreciate that. I would ask, I would like next month, some update as to possibly what you're thinking, what you're seeing, what the trends are. So that we just have an idea and some discussion about it possibly. So that we know where, where this is maybe heading from your viewpoint.
Will do.
Thank you, Tiffany. Go ahead, trustee Lewis.
Okay. Next, my next questions are for Maria.
Okay.
Maria, can you go into a little more detail about how we, it's, it's amazing to me that we could miss an ADA standards of design in today's world. Everybody is so conscious of that. Can you go into a little more detail about how that happened possibly?
Mayor, trustee Lewis, what I can say about that is that we had ADA issues, ADA issues from the very beginning. As soon as we entered the construction phase. We had issues with the slopes of ramps. And I mean, it just was, it was a, there was not enough detail in the plan set. The final construction plan set when it was led to construction for constructability and for conformance with ADA regulation. I, I cannot say why that is so. I was not involved in the design phase, but it became apparent in the construction phase. And that's why so many change orders related to ADA. I'm sorry.
Is that, no, that's, that's fine, Maria. I appreciate that. Is that something that goes back to Site Southwest then?
Mayor, trustee Lewis, the design team is headed up by Site Southwest with an engineer, Tiara West, as a sub consultant who stamped the plan set. So yes, it is, I mean, it is the responsibility of the design team to meet all requirements of constructability, including ADA.
Okay, so I assume this is an, an open issue that we still are dealing with?
Mayor, trustee Lewis, it is ongoing discussion and in project closeout, we are resolving and having discussions based on the number of change orders and the final cost of the project. Yes.
Okay, thank you, Maria. Moving on, in, in the work done at the AgriNature Center. I had been approached by some people last month saying that they thought the asphalt was settling. And we talked about looking at that. Did you look at that as you close out that project?
Mayor, trustee Lewis, AgriNature Center is closed out pending final audit and payment to the contractor. And we have received the asphalt testing and it met, it exceeded 95% compactability. The mayor has also reviewed those from an engineering standpoint. And it was constructed more than adequately. What people feel, and you'll notice now, since it's been several weeks, is there has been some additional settling of the approaches to the new constructed part of the asphalt. And it has improved. But you have a really good section of asphalt there with approaches from either side that is a number of years old.
Oh, okay.
Conditioned than the brand new one.
Okay. Yep, thank you, Maria.
Anything else, trustee Lewis?
That is all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Pacheco.
I do have a few questions.
Yeah.
Let's start with Administrator Simon. And this is in regard to the CARES Act grants. I'm just curious how soon and who will be involved in making the decisions in terms of who these grants will be benefiting in terms of the village businesses? My hope is that it's going to be fairly quick because I think that the need is now as opposed to later. Can you address that just a bit?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, trustee Pacheco. We have a committee of five and it's staff members. First, I should back up by saying, we haven't finalized all of the grant documents with the state. But as soon as we do, we are going to launch an outreach process as soon as possible. We're going to open this up for every village business under 50. I'm sorry, 50 or under employees. So that it's as equitable as possible. We only got, we were hoping that we could give $5,000 to every business. Assuming we got the full $2 million we asked for, we only got half of that. So we're going to open it up as, as broadly as possible. And that is going to require some strategic outreach, which our committee, our, our staff committee will be, will be working on. And, and then we'll, we'll, we'll try to divvy it up as equally as possible. If there's funding left over, we can go for a second round. But we, we, we are hoping to get that out this month.
Okay, so the month of September?
Yes.
Is what we're looking at? Awesome. Fantastic, thank you. The AgriNature Center that you comment on, and I don't know if this would be something that either you, Administrator Simon, or Maria Rinaldi would comment on. But what is the timeframe, what realistically that we're looking at for this construction to start and, and you know, to kind of move forward?
Okay, Mayor, trustee Pacheco, we have, you're talking about the 250,000 that was recently re-released. So we, I believe, and Maria, you can correct me, I believe that doesn't expire till 2023. So we have some time, but fortunately, we also have a roadmap. So finally, we have some idea of, of a place to put this money. And one of the needs, as we know, now that we have sanitary sewer and water, is for ADA bathrooms. That facility, we envision to be an ag center of excellence. We are bringing in children, we're bringing in groups. We do not have the capacity in our, in our toilets. So that is priority number one. And I believe as we toured the facility last, this past summer, there was a very simple solution to put ADA bathrooms in the warehouse without touching the rest of the facility. We, we wouldn't have to tear down the older part of the facility, which, which is sort of the larger long-range plan. And that's the direction we're leaning towards. But we, we don't have a contract, we don't have an idea yet, we don't even have a specified set of plans yet. But we are working with Insight Works. And we, we will be getting detailed plans for how we can at least get forward, get started on phase one of that redesign. Do you have anything to add, Maria?
No, you covered it all.
Great, thank you. Let's see, moving to Director Justice's report. I, I like trustee Lewis, when you say that there were more new residential builds than usual. I, I also agree that if you could just elaborate a little bit more on that and kind of let us know why you feel like that happened. That would be great. And also with regard to the short-term rentals. This is something that, of course, we've been talking about for, for many, many months now that, and hoping that we can get to some kind of conclusion. So just like trustee Lewis, I, I hope we can get to a final policy here soon. And with regard to the permits, and I'm looking at page 70. You list the permits. And then there's also valuations that accompany those permits. Can you just explain to me how the valuations are determined? Does that come from the contractor or is that something we do? Where do those numbers come from?
Trustee Pacheco, trustees, mayor. So that valuation is the value of that construction per the international building codes occupancy type for that structure. So there's a valuation set to it. So like a garage will be valued differently per square foot than a new house. And then we multiply that times the square footage and we use a percent of that plus a $30 base fee. This was a calculation and fee rate that was set in 2012. And we use that for all construction. Except for solar and pools, which since they don't really have square footage, we use the contract amount and the similar, and a similar formula.
Okay, and are all municipalities using that same, you know, way of getting to the valuation?
I believe so. I know that Burnley County has a very similar fee valuation structure as well.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Go ahead, trustee Pacheco.
Let's see, I think all of Maria's questions were answered. Just one for Fred. Under the other issues, you, you talk about a possible drive-in concert. Just kind of curious, what was, what is that about?
Mayor, trustee Pacheco, Ann and I met with Corallus Music Group or whatever that put on that concert last year. And they're looking at, they wanted to do the same thing, of course, since we cannot use the barn for a concert. They're looking at trying to do like a drive-in, like the drive-in movies that communities have been doing and doing like a drive-in concert. And so we met about, we met with them about it. And I think they're looking at maybe October and then next spring. And it's just a, I think, a preliminary meeting and, and you know, we have to follow the course of the governor's guidelines. But they, the governor does allow, right now, drive-in events. And that's what they're kind of hoping to try and, and, and do. And I, I think it's a great idea. I mean, we, we talked about using both ParkNet Park, Parking Lot and also the Barn Parking Lot for the vehicles and stuff. And, and, but I have not heard back from them yet. Maybe Ann has, but I think it's a great, great idea if we can, if they can pull it off.
For sure, thank you, Fred. That, that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Ricabini.
Thank you, Mayor.
Tom Ricabini.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
So a question on, on your report, Mayor, just curious. How did Los Rancho's? We got a, seems like we're way over the top of Los Lunas, for instance. What do you think the reasons are for that as far as the, the million six that we got?
Well, we got 1,006, which was 50% of what we asked for. As far as Los Lunas, and I only use Los Lunas because it's also a village and they got the same, they got about 50,000 for their, their own. Like we got 50. But they didn't ask for as much. And my guess, and I talked to Fred about this. They didn't actually want to deal with all of the businesses in their community. They may have a much narrower scope. So I think that's the reason why there was such a difference between Los Rancho's. But I do think Los Rancho's fared very, very well. I will say that throughout the state of New Mexico, apparently, the governor's office and DFA decided to give everybody approximately 50% of what they asked for. Okay?
So it was a matter of asking, what happens with excess money that's not used?
Oh, there won't be any, well, my opinion is there won't be any because we'll have a second or third round. If there was, if there is any excess money, which I don't think there will be.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, go ahead. Any other comments?
Yeah, yes. I noticed those pickleball courts are going in. Ms. Simon. I would, I would just be careful that the that is, the old village hall's out of the way. And so I would be curious as to how much use they get. So I'm, I'm glad you're doing something that's going to keep costs down and, and kind of give it a try, right? So I think that's great. Let's see, other question, many other questions have been answered. I also feel that the, for drafting the policy of short-term rentals, that's a hot topic. So I would also encourage Ms. Justice for you to have the, have that prepared. There's a, a large, is that one single garage for 450,000? It's just a question in the, in the evaluation. Is that one single or is that a cumulative?
So trustee Ricabini, trustees, mayor, that is one garage. It's not a single-car garage, but it is one garage.
Okay. All right, not a house.
No.
Okay, all right. And see what else here. Everything else has been taken care of. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We're going to move to financial business now.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Just in a follow-up on, on what trustee Pacheco was talking about, I had, I'd like to hear from Ann a little bit more how they think this is going to work and, and how the timeframe. I mean, I know you want to allocate so much money to people and businesses. And then a second round. Do you have a little bit? Do you have a little vision of how that structure's going to be? You know, will this get out to them in the next 60 days, or this something that, then it's going to be, you know, 120 days before round two gets out? So I was just, I was just curious what you all, what you're all thinking is along that line.
Mayor and trustee Louis and trustees, that is a great question, and these are some of the things that we're sorting out in our committee. Right now, we have, as I mentioned, we still have to get our documents squared away with the state, but to actually get the money. But they, technically, we are, if we are, we haven't expended all the money by the end of the year, they want us to give it back. We hope not to do that, we would like it in the hands of our businesses. We have a, an application already, already put together. We have a sketch of an outreach strategy, and we, we kind of based the, our ask, our request from the state on the number of businesses in, in Los Rancho's. So we hope that those who are paying attention come forward so that we can deploy this funding. I don't know that we've fully thought through rounds two and three. I think the main thing was that we prioritize the businesses that were not able to get PPP loans or, or any of the idle grants. We're going to, we're going to try to prioritize those, those businesses first. There's a lot of really small businesses that haven't really gotten much of anything. So we want to make sure that they receive funding. There's also businesses that have spent a lot of hard capital trying to get outside seating and comply with the patio rules, and we want to make sure that those businesses are compensated. Beyond that, you raised really good questions. This is all very, very new, and we haven't had a lot of time to, to think everything through. But, you know, our goal is to get it out the door as soon as possible, and, and hopefully we can do it in one fell swoop.
Is that it? Trustee Louis?
Yes, thank you, Ann.
Okay, let's move to item eight, financial business discussion and approval of the cash report for August 2020. Treasurer Will Fisher is excused from tonight's meeting. CFO Tammy Silva will be presenting the cash report. Go ahead, Tammy.
Good evening, mayor and trustees. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent, okay. So for the cash report for the month of August, we have an ending cash balance of $5,1,623.47. That's a decrease from the prior month of $96,788.73. And our year-to-date deficiency of revenue over expenditures is $176,657.30. And I have a few items that I marked as unusual or significant. The first two items on the list here are items that will just look funny on the cash report. On page six, we have a year-to-date number that's negative in an expense category. This is due to accruals going back into the prior fiscal year. The second one is, again, due to accruals. On page eight, our year-to-date amount is lower than the current period amount, and that is due to moving some expenses back into the prior year. And then the last three items are just large items, not necessarily unusual. On page 12, and on page 23, we have a payment to Bradbury Stan. It is split between our general fund for $64,425.40, and in our capital expenditures towards a grant for $24,000, at $24,060. And the last item is the first of four reimbursements for a state grant that we are expecting to receive. This is grant 16-82397. This is the grant that expired on June 30th, 2020, so we did receive our first payment. And I stand for any questions.
Tammy, I pointed out to you on page 77, that we made a payment of $262,153 for general obligation bonds. So I think that's, and that is a payment that's due, how often, Tammy, did you tell me?
Yes, mayor and trustees, that is correct. That payment is due, we had a $220,000 bond principal payment that was due on August 1st. That is the only principal payment that is due for the fiscal year. Along with that was a interest payment that was due. That interest payment is due on August 1st, and then we will have one other interest payment that's close to $47,000, that's due on February 1st.
The reason I brought this, trustees, the reason I brought this to Tammy's attention is that covers, that's the reason why you see a negative $176,657, okay? So before we get to discussion, I need a motion to approve the cash report.
I'm going to motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion at this time?
Yes, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Good evening, Tammy. Can you, can you explain to me a little bit more? How we roll some of this back into last year's financials when we've submitted our final paperwork to the state?
So.
How does that work?
Mayor, trustee Louis, so the way that works is, so the state paperwork and this cash report you're looking at are on a cash basis. And so what the state is getting is our cash basis, what we end the year on before any of these accruals happen. Accruals only happen for government just because they are on a accrued, a modified accrual basis. So these accruals that are taking place are specifically for the financial statements that we will report. And the unfortunate thing with the way these accruals work is, the report you're looking at is on a cash basis, so when a payment or a receipt comes in, I have to book it on the day that we receive it, or that we pay it. And that's why you see these negative numbers. So the Rockefeller cleanup for Toscosa, it happened before June 30th, but, but that invoice didn't come in until July 13th. When that invoice came in, I had to pay it on July 13th. So on a cash basis, money in, money out on that day. But for the financial statement purpose, I then have to book a journal entry that actually moves that money back into, onto June 30th for the presentation of the financials.
And, and the state, the state's fine with that, and that's how that works?
Yes, this is a requirement of the state, too. And in the financial statements, what you see is, you'll see three different presentations of our financials. They have the numbers when we end, before we book accruals, then they have the accrual basis financials, so that you're able to see both.
Okay, thank you, Tammy. I have just one other question.
Yes.
Let me find it here.
If you're not speaking, please mute your, your, your phone or your iPad or whatever. There is a little bit of background noise.
So on page 118, the check register. I, I had a question on Tico LLC, on the railroad tie installation for 608 El Pueblo Road.
Okay.
What is, what does that work for?
Mayor, trustee Louis, that railroad tie installation, I will have to honestly double-check the exact work for that. I know the maintenance department did that work, I'm not sure if, I don't think Keen's on the call.
Mayor and trustee Louis, I think I can explain. In the development of El Pueblo Road, there was a property owner who was adversely impacted by the road design, and this was shoring up some drainage that was going into her property.
So this is repeating the work, or is this the, the work that's been done now that, I'm, I'm a little confused on, was, if this was current work, or, I mean, if this is work done, what work was done on El Pueblo recently?
It actually, mayor, trustee Louis, trustees, this, this is a, this has been a chronic problem for many, many years, and it was something that the former administration promised to address, and it just, they never got around to addressing, and we're getting to it finally now.
Okay, great, thank you, Ann. Thank you, Tammy. That's all my questions.
Any other questions from the trustees on the cash report? If none, I'm going to call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Louis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Rick Abini.
Yes.
Thank you. Item B, discussion and approval of resolution number 2020-09-01, a budget adjustment request, parentheses, bar. Tammy, please explain.
Mayor, trustees, this bar that we are presenting tonight is for really two items that have occurred. We want to make sure that we are in compliance with our budget requirements, and we had two large items come up for the Toscosa property, for the cleanup of that property, and then also for, in the amount of $27,310. And then also a second item for the utilities work at the Agr Nature Center to get a connection to the Water Authority, and that amount was $20,317. We normally have waited in the past to do bars at mid-year and then end of year, however, being that these are two significant items, we're requesting this bar to increase our line item, and they're both to the same line item. We're requesting to increase our line item by these two amounts, so that way we can submit it to the state right away and just have it done and be in compliance, since it is such a significant number.
I'd like to add to that, the 20,000 that we paid to the Water Authority, I've had discussions with attorney Nan Winter, and she believes that we can actually get that money back in our negotiation with the Water Authority on the franchise agreement, but we still need the bar. So I'm going to, before I get to discussion, I'm going to ask for a motion. I need a motion.
And the approval of resolution 2020-09-01.
I need a second.
A second.
Any discussion at this time?
Yes, I have.
Go ahead.
You know, the last couple of months, Toscosa property has been mentioned quite a bit, and there's been quite a bit of money spent on it.
Right.
But I, I haven't heard many of the details, could somebody give me a little synopsis as, as to the Toscosa property and what's led to this expense, et cetera?
Ann, you want to dive in on this, because you're pretty familiar.
Sure. Mayor, trustee Louis and trustees, this had been a problem property for many, many, many years, 15, 20 years. The property had become so out of compliance and out of really the bounds of normalcy that we got a court order to enter the property and clean it up to our satisfaction. We could have cleaned the entire property, front, back, and inside, but we chose to just focus on the front yard and the backyard and the, and the two side yards. When we got into the property, we found that there was not only waste, but there was hazardous material. And once you get into hazardous waste, you have no idea, until the waste is collected and sorted and disposed of, how much money the, the cleanup is going to cost. So we had an idea, but we didn't have the final tally until the job was finished to our satisfaction. And right now, it, it's a lot better, and the family is happy, and, and we didn't have to displace the family. But it was at a, a large expense to the village, absolutely, and we will be going back to the court with the invoices for a lien on the property.
Yes. So this is a residential property, and the family still lives in the house?
Yes.
Is that, is that something normal? That when somebody's property gets so out of control, you just clean it up for them and then lien the property? I mean, I, I'm just trying to understand the situation and what you all found and what you dealt with.
Yeah, trustee Louis and, and trustees, it was a very uncomfortable situation all, all the way around, and very unusual, I would say.
Trustee Louis, what Ann told me during this process was that our cleanup contractor would go in there during the day, and then at night, or whenever they were gone, the people would go back out to the bins and bring the trash back inside. Is that correct, Ann?
Yes, and I believe that, that Fred Radosevic is, is also able to jump in on this. And I just want to remind everybody to try to keep subjective comments out of the discussion, just for the sake of privacy.
Mayor and trustee Louis, really what, what happened there is the outside became a public safety hazard. It was a fire hazard, there was just so much stuff, and, and the village had worked through the municipal court over a period of years to try and get it cleaned up, but we finally decided that at some point, we needed to take it to district court to actually get a court order to, to do it. And, and again, it, it was a fire issue, it was a public safety issue, and then, like we said, again, said, we ended up finding hazardous material, a bunch of paint, old paint, and that's very, very expensive to, to clean up. Now the challenge for us is to, to make sure that we, we keep it cleaned up, and we've also been working with the family through Burnley County to get them services that they need, and so we'll continue working on it from that end also.
So the decision was just to leave the family there, as long as they want to stay there, and, and if they want to bring the trash back in, that's going to happen, and this has a real opportunity to be a repeat cycle.
Mayor and trustee Louis, I don't think we're going to allow that to happen. We're, we're monitoring it, and we're, and I know Ann and Keen and I drive by there quite often, and if we start to see it piling up again, honestly, what we're, first thing is we'll get with Nan, Nan's attorney Juan and everything, and get another court order to take care of the problem. But hopefully, it's not going to, to get to that point again.
Okay. I'm a little skeptical, but I'll take it at this, at this point for where it's at. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Any other discussion? I'm going to call for the question, I'm going to call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Louis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Rick Abini. Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
The BAR has been approved. Item nine is public hearings. This item has been deferred by the request of the applicant, so we don't have to deal with it. Item 10 is old business. There is none. Item 11 announcements, there are none. Item 12 is new business, 12A, discussion and approval of resolution number 2020-09-02, adopting the 2022 to 2026 infrastructure capital improvement plan parentheses ICIP for the village of Los Rancho to Albuquerque. Administrator Simon.
Yes, Mayor trustees, this is, as I mentioned last, last month, a sort of wish list for the village. It goes up to the state. It is the list in which whenever you ask for capital outlay from the legislature, they look first to see if the project you're requesting funds for matches your ICIP. The items on the list are Fourth Street Phase Two. The road funding that you all approved in the budget. This is the co-op match money for the roads in and around the village outside of Fourth Street. Improvements to the Agri Nature Center. These are the long-term improvements to the Agri Nature Center. Village Hall, as we showed you during your tour this summer, we are not in compliance with ADA and Village Hall, but it is a huge expense. So we have that as a long-range request. And we have some land purchase on the ICIP that was initially intended for a piece of property across the street from the Agri Nature Center, as I, as I understand. I went ahead and left that on as a long-term project. As new land comes available and we have some, some funding right now in our budget for land purchase. And this would just be to, to request more funding if anything came available. And that, that's the extent of our list this year.
Okay, before we get to discussion, I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2020-09-02?
I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion at this time on, on the ICIP? If none, I'm going to call for the question. I'm going to call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rael.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Thank you. 12B is discussion and approval of resolution number 2020-09-03, disposition of obsolete, worn out, or unusable tangible property. Clerk Sadio Molina.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. If you recall, last month I announced the notice of intent for the disposition of obsolete, worn out, or unusable tangible property that is no longer of service. Specifically, the equipment that was left over from the Unser Museum and hadn't been used in years. Also included are a few old desk units from Village Hall and a flame mower from the Agri Nature Center. As you can tell by the pictures, most of the equipment is aged, broken, or in disrepair. In the packet, you will find the resolution for your approval, along with the inventory list of items for disposal and photos of the equipment. Once approved, I will forward on to the state auditor's office and the local government division of the Department of Finance for their final approval of disposition. I appreciate your consideration tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Danielle. Before we get into any discussion, I need a motion.
I move approval of 2020-09-03.
I need a second.
I second.
Is there any discussion at this time?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
First of all, on page 129 of 135, there's a third item from the bottom that says HB Harrod Drive is probably, should be hard drive. Is that right?
Yes, sir. That is correct. It should be hard drive.
Also, there's, there's some of this is repeated. Is that an error or is that?
No, sir. No, sir, the, they're not repeated. They are in those kind of numbers. If you saw in those pictures how they were stacked, there were multiple items of the same equipment.
Okay, that's all I have.
Any further questions or discussion? Being none, I'm going to call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rael.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Now we move to item C, and this is for discussion only. Village Center Updates. Administrator Simon and Ms. Maria Rinaldi. Ann, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. We're really excited about Village Center. While all the focus has been on Fourth Street, Village Center promises to be a sterling bookend, if you will, to our beautiful Fourth Street project. And we're finally moving forward. The developer, Palindrom LLC, who won the RFP, has been working with us and is very excited to move forward. He is ready as soon as we are. What Maria and I have been doing is making sure that the village is protected. Given that this is the first time either of us have entered into a development agreement. We're just going very slowly and very carefully. So the first thing we did was hire a firm in Chicago, SB Friedman, to help us develop a term sheet that will go into the draft development agreement. And we have finalized the term sheet. We have submitted it to the developer who's now looking at it. And once he gives us his okay, Nan Winter will then roll it into a development agreement that we hope to bring back to you all next month. So we're very close to, to sharing information. The reason you didn't get any information in your packet is because we just want to give the developer a chance to look first at, at the terms and make sure that he's comfortable. And terms are things like a schedule of the development and when he, and when he might get financing. A spatial site plan. As you may recall, when you saw the, I believe all of you saw the RF, the, the, the award-winning proposal had a schematic of what the development would look like, the 12 acres would look like. We do not want to hold the developer to that site plan as the market has changed. That was nearly two years ago. And because of the change in the market, we want to give the developer as much flexibility as possible. If the developer wants to move the retail to the Fourth Street side instead of the center of the project, for example, we want to make sure that he has the ability to do that. So that is why we have not published any schematic drawings up to this point. Other things that are in the term sheet are the conditions of the land transfer. At what point will we turn over the, the deed to the land? He will need an assurance from the village to go to the bank for his financing. But, but we want to make sure that the village is protected. So those are some of the things that we're putting into the term sheet to the development agreement. The other thing is who is going to own, operate, and maintain the infrastructure? Right now, he is assuming that he will be developing and maintaining the road network inside the development. And the great thing is, and one thing that we've learned, is that he's in it for the long haul and he's in it with us. This is not, this is why we selected him, by the way. He is not a turnkey developer that's just going to, you know, chip off the easiest part of the development and then walk away. He is excited about this project. He only gets involved in projects that he's really passionate about. And one of the things that makes him really different and unique is that he is developing the center of the project along with us. So it behooves him to maintain the roads and to make them to the standard of the village or, or better. Because that helps him market and fill up his site. So we're really excited and we can't wait to show you everything. And it will happen hopefully next month. But, but that is why we don't have anything for you to look at per se right now. Because we're just letting him take a first blush. And, and as soon as we get word back from him, we'll, we'll hand it over to Nan and get something before you. Do you have anything to add, Maria?
Yes, please, Ann. I would just like to add that the basis of the development agreement is a cost benefit analysis and a positive return on investment. Very simply, we're looking at the results of the economic analysis we required as part of the MOU. And in response to the RP, it was a component of, of the winning proposal that we've required. And the results of that economic development show a multimillion dollar return on investment for a period exceeding 25 years, according to his analysis. And based on an appraisal amount of the property, we've had it appraised as if vacant, which means it's the market value of the land minus the cost of raising the buildings, basically scraping the land. That appraisal value is three million, a little over three, almost three and a half million dollar. And with a 25.3 million tax return to Burnley County and the village of Los Rancho's, you can see that we can show a positive return on investment. And I just wanted to point out that that's the simple basis for the development agreement. And all of the terms will be fleshed out based on that. And we have actually proceeded this far with this based on our opinion from council that this is an allowable trade, a decision that the BOT will make when it comes to approving the development agreement, that this deal, if you will, is a, an exchange for fair value of the land in return for the development to be built out. That's all I'd like to add.
Okay, any further items you want to say, Ann, at this time?
I stand for questions. Maria made a great point. The economic return is more than 15 million to the village, over 25 to the county. It's a, it is a great deal for us. We are not unduly enriching a developer. And I, I feel like it's really going to be a flagship project.
So let me add this. Does the governing body have any questions for Administrator Simon or Ms. Rinaldi? If so, we will have each trustee ask all their questions before we move to the next trustee. Trustee Rael.
No questions.
Trustee Lewis.
I just, I have a question on how you're going to present this to us. It sounds like there'll be a tremendous amount of information. Will this be something will be given before a trustee meeting? You know, more than a couple of days before the trustee meeting, will this be something will be brought into the office and have a chance to go into it in some real detail? Or will this be something we try to do at all at a trustee meeting?
Trustee Lewis, Mayor trustees, I will, will take your suggestion. I think we, we can, we can do this all in the course of a meeting. Hopefully it won't be that long. The term sheet is not long. And I don't think the development agreement would be onerous. Maria, do you have any thoughts?
Trustee Lewis, Mayor Ann, and Nan Winter, if she, if she would like to chime in on this. I'm, I would like to make the recommendation that when we have approval of the terms of the term sheet in our final negotiation with Palindrom, with Mr. Reniker, that that is something that we could share with you in advance of the development agreement for presentation. And that gives you some detail of the deal which will be presented in the agreement. So that might be something helpful to have in advance as soon as we have Mr. Reniker's say so on that. I don't see any issue with giving you that. Ann?
Thank you.
Ann, would you agree?
I just, yes, trustees and Mayor Maria, I agree. I think the term sheet would be helpful. We've actually asked him some questions in the term sheet, like what parcels are you developing first, that kind of thing. So I guess I, I would also like to hear what Nan has to say if, if she would advise that we could pass out a term sheet prior to a development agreement.
Nan?
Mayors, trustees, so I did receive the term sheet and we've been working on a draft development agreement. Our draft development agreement is probably pushing 20 single spaced pages. So I, I think it would probably be helpful to have, you know, to take up trustee Lewis's suggestion on this, which is present the concept, present the term sheet. And then we can even do two readings of the development agreement if necessary. You know, one in October, one in November. But, you know, my, I have been tasked by Ann and Maria with having a, a development agreement. But in order to, you know, make sure that the value is here and that all our Ts are crossed and Is are dotted and that there aren't any anti-donation issues, which we've already rendered a legal opinion on, it takes verbiage. And I, I, it, it would probably be somewhat shocking for you to have to consider a 20-page, single-spaced document next October without any back, without any background. So I think if there's an opportunity to present the project, what he's proposing, diagrams, and I, and I know all of that exists, I would suggest that, you know, maybe some one-on-one meetings and/or a, a really complete package for the October meeting.
I, I guess my question, Nan, is we need to be careful about the Open Meetings Act, correct?
Absolutely. Yeah, you cannot, there can't be more than two of you in a room at one time. But thankfully, there's only five of you all together. So it shouldn't be too complicated.
Thank you, Nan and Mayor trustees. I just also wanted to mention that Chad Veniker, who's the developer with Palindrom, is more than happy to come before you. He has mentioned this many, many times. So if it would be helpful to, in the next meeting, that's October, come with some schematics and give you all a chance to, to talk to him before you see the development agreement. I think we can make that happen.
Okay, let's move on. Go ahead.
I need to ask a question of Nan. I recuse myself from voting on this because I own property in, in that area. But how much, can I join in any conversation or do you have to stay out completely?
Well, in terms of recusing yourself from deliberation, I, I think that means you cannot participate in any conversation either. I think if you want to educate yourself about what he's proposing, you're more than welcome as a resident of the, of the village to do that. But I, I would be, you know, we can have, we can have another offline conversation about, you know, I don't think you have to step down from the DS. I don't think you have to leave the room. But you certainly can't participate in the conversation.
Hey?
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Trustee.
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
And I, I want to, I want to just make mention that this is a, this is a very important document.
Of course.
And I, I for one want to, I want to see, I want to see the term sheet. I want to see the presentation and I want to see the agreement.
Of course. Of course.
Prior to, with plenty of time to contemplate and understand consequences and potential downfalls. And so that's just my input. I, I don't want to only have a little bit of time to, to read it and absorb it and think about it. So it takes
I agree.
So please keep us informed and, and let's move forward that way.
So trustee Pacheco, do you have any questions?
I do, and I think trustee Lewis wasn't quite done yet.
I'm not sure.
Okay, so I just have a question and I'll direct this to Maria since she brought it up. But Maria or Anne are both welcome to address it. With regard to the economic analysis that you talked about, Maria, who actually conducts that? And do we have any say in that or is it just totally one-sided?
Actually, Mayor, trustee Pacheco, the economic impact analysis, we provided a number of potential contractors to conduct this based on recommendations from the Economic Development Department at Burnaleo County. Gave us a list of companies who do this and have done similar things in the Burnaleo County area. And it was done by Applied Economics and is certainly available for review and will be placed significantly in the presentation of the development agreement and will become part of the public record. But yes, it was a third-party review. The con, Palindrom paid for it to be, and it's actually in draft form and I need to make sure that we get it outside final, final draft as part of that package. But it was a third-party economic analysis.
Okay, thank you.
It was a requirement of being the successful proposer.
Okay, so it was, it was talked about upfront?
Yes.
It was in the, yes, I wrote it into the RFP.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Are there any further questions? If not, we're going to
I have, I have one more.
All right, go ahead.
And it's really just a suggestion. I think this is by far one of the biggest projects that the village has ever undertaken.
Right.
And I think it's a critical, critical project. And, and I would make a suggestion that we have a special board of trustees meeting just on this issue with Chad Venneker. And then given time, you know, to digest it, as Tom said, before we get to a trustee meeting. I wouldn't be comfortable at all getting some of this or all of this in a trustee meeting and, and making any decision at that time.
And, and I think that's a great suggestion, trustee Lewis. Thank you for offering it.
Thank you.
Anything else on item C? We're going to move on to trustee informal discussion. Roundtable discussion is informal. The Board of Trustees will take no official vote or other official action. I will start with trustee Rael.
Yeah, I have two things. First of all, I would like to ask if anything has been done with the, the discussion or the concern that Bob Kears had about the rust on the forming on the steel structures on Fourth Street?
Maria, do you want to comment on that?
Certainly. Mayor, trustee Rael, we have investigated that. We've come up with a potential solution. It was in fact a design, the design was done in accordance with the specifications. There was an alternative to an oil that was specked and it was done as a wax process. The rusting has occurred. The rusting is not a structural concern. It is more of an aesthetic and there's actually an aesthetic of rust. But in order to eliminate the visible rust, the contractor is going to apply an oil. But there, there's no other concern other than the fact that it looks like it's rusting.
Okay, thank you. I have one other thing. On the, on Fourth and Brantitos, there's a large sign that's just been put up recently that, that says Republican Party of Burnaleo County. It's large, like a four-by-eight sign that's out in the, on the, right by the road. Is that legal? It doesn't sound like that's legal.
I, I can address that. If you give me the name, Mayor, trustee Rael, if you give me the, the name of the location, we can go check it out. I have been getting calls on what signs are allowable now that it's campaign season. And we have 12 square feet is our, is our allowable sign size. And that's about a four, three by four. So it sounds like this one might be a little bit larger and it would not be allowable.
Okay, it's, it's located on right in front of the little shopping center, the strip mall there. It's on a northwest corner of Fourth and Brantitos.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lewis.
I just, I have one comment there. Last month, and, and I've seen a few emails, there's been some people that I, I felt like had taken some shots at the planning and zoning committee.
Yes.
And last night, I, I listened to most of the meeting. And I, and I just want to be on record of saying I thought they did a very professional job. I thought Lynn Eby ran a very professional meeting. I thought the, the other commissioners were involved and asked intelligent questions and gave a lot of thought to their comments and their votes. And so I just want to be on record to say I thought they did a very good job.
Thank you, trustee Lewis.
It deserved to be commented, you know, commended on it. That's all I have.
Let's move on to trustee Pacheco.
I do just have a few things. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you, Mayor, for your appointment. I believe it's as Director of Part of the New Mexico Municipal League.
Thank you.
Just wanted to say congratulations on that. We are moving into the fourth quarter of the year, which is just amazing that we're already almost at the end of 2020. Some of us can say thank goodness and other, others of us are, can't believe that we're already there. At any rate, I just, I just want to put out there that I, I want us to continue to stay on task with our priorities, especially those that were kind of involved with the master plan. The short-term rentals, which we brought up before, I think is, is a big one. The Village Center, which we talked about, of course, is another one. I hope that we will continue to pursue new opportunities guided by the master plan, whether it be housing or, or services. I just think we need to stay on task with that and just not take our eyes off of that. And then lastly, I just want to wish everybody a healthy end of summer and beginning of fall. Just that we all continue to, to do, be diligent about COVID and that we continue and take precautions so that, that we stay well.
Thank you, trustee Pacheco. Trustee Ricabini.
Yeah, thank you. Just a, just a comment of job well done. I think that things are going well. I'm going to get an echo trustee Lewis's comment about planning and zoning and, and the, the way that the P and Z is, is moving things forward. I think also in a very professional manner. Let's stay, let's stay with the long-term rentals and short-term rentals and, and make sure we don't, we don't keep, we got to keep our eye on that ball because that's coming, coming every day right now. So, and then last thing, Mayor, can you please bring the sun back out?
I wish I could.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be out this weekend. Take my word for it.
Appreciate it.
I just have a couple of comments. I have started a discussion with Nan Winter on our franchise agreements. We get over a quarter of a million dollars in our budget. It's actually in our budget for franchise taxes. And some of these agreements, of course, have been expired. And so Nan is working on them. And she thinks, and I think that we can actually get additional money in our budget because of the renewal of the franchise agreements. So as we move forward on this, I'm going to keep the trustees informed and, and also work with Nan and also our staff to, to make sure that we've got things under control regarding the franchises. Second item is about every week I participate in mayor's caucuses with the New Mexico Municipal League. And they keep me informed, along with the other mayors who attend throughout New Mexico, of all of the issues that are going on around the state regarding COVID-19, the governor's public health orders and other things. They talk about how much money the state gave them for CARES Act. So I stay informed really to the maximum when it comes to that sort of thing. So, so I'm pretty alert. If anything pops up that affects the village, I'm going to know about it. And that's all I have for now. So I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting, but I do need a motion and a second.
Motion to adjourn?
Need a second? Okay, the time is 8:37 PM. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.